Good evening. Welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, October 26th, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Chairman, will you go ahead and do your roll call?
Mr. Allen.
President.
Ms. Bowers.
President.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
President.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
President Williams.
Please let the record know that Council President Williams is excused for this evening's legislative session. Let's move into the invocation. Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. I'd ask that we all please keep the families and friends of the following residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Mr. Michael Jones, Senior, Mr. Howard Parker, Ms. Kathy Topfer Possinger, Mr. Walter Dawkins, Senior, who was the father of Council President Williams, Ms. Daisy Eden, Ms. Annie Wright, Ms. Karen Anderson, Ms. Tenzie Carter Davis. Please have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Majors.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Father of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
Thank you, Councilmember Majors. Moving on to communications. There is none for this evening. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, I will start with my right. Please come to the microphone if you'd like to make a public comment.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Gristo. Some things that are taking place in the city of Harrisburg. I've been growing up here, been here for decades, and ministered for a number of decades too, to inner-city youth since the mid-1980s. Seen a lot, heard a lot, some good, some very tragic. But in observing some things that's going on in the city of Harrisburg concerning safety in a way of health, safety in a way of welfare of an individual as far as their well-being is concerned. That is, not just physically, but spiritually as well. It's not just about keeping people in prayer, which I do. I was asked to pray for those in authority. You all here are in authority. I am rather disappointed that someone is not here tonight. In fact, there's two people that are not here tonight that I am going to be addressing. And concerning positions of authority, they're not to be taken lightly, especially in light of Scripture. Romans, Chapter 5 tells us to keep those that are in authority in prayer. But I want to address first a matter concerning flooding that took place in September. As I've been driving around the city, taking pictures, I noticed that the canal that runs parallel to Cameron Street was at the very brim. I took pictures of different buildings, parking spaces, and what have you with the flooding is concerned. And I noticed that the floodwaters were right up against walls of the Appalachian Brewing Company. I had it right here on my cell phone. And I'm just wondering, I'm not even sure if they're still open. I don't know. I drove by, the doors were closed, there were signs, whether they are, whether they aren't. But as far as codes in a city of Harrisburg, is there anybody that inspects their water considering that we just had a flood? The pipes, as you know, go underground. They're not above ground, crossing buildings, they're all under. So the floodwaters were up to the very level of the street. So considering that all of us here, the pipes run underground for water, did anybody bother to inspect the quality of the water at the Appalachian Brewing Company? Let's go about a half mile downstream, if you will, to Savannah's. Same thing. Water up to the back walls of the building. Did anybody inspect their water to see if it's safe, to see if it's contaminated or not? Who knows what kind of water is going into brewing that beer? I mean, they may have their so-called standards, but what about the city? Do they check on those matters when, after flooding takes place? I remember well, the '72 flood. Some of you don't. I will remember it. Lot of devastation. I had firsthand experience with that one. And even again in '96. So again, what's being done to inspect on these matters? And I want to get to another very important matter as well. Concerning Savannah's, I have seen and talked to some of the individual women that go in and out of that place. Is there anybody here that is not aware it's a strip joint? It's not a place people just go to to have a good time and watch football, whatever. It is a strip joint. And you should all know, if you don't already, that human trafficking takes place at a number of strip joints. I didn't say that one. I said it takes place in strip joints. That's a fact. Check with police chiefs all across the nation. They'll tell you if you want to look into it. Who knows what goes on at that strip joint? But here's what's most disturbing. She's not here tonight, Ms. Williams. She has financial transactions going on with that strip joint. In fact, whether it's her giving money to them or them giving money to her, why would anybody on City Council, whether you're the lowest or the highest in authority, why would you have anything to do with a strip joint? They are a blatant society. And not only that, she puts an ad, they had an ad put up for her on the sign. You can see it from Interstate 83. Savannah's, Club Excel, a big old pole from Cameron Street. City property extends up to 83 for all to see. And her advertisement is there, run for the city of Harrisburg. Oh, wow. How proud is that?
Sir, sir, you don't want to get into disparaging individuals. We are more than willing to hear people's public comment on all matters. Council President is not here because she is bereaved and her father just passed away recently, so.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I gave you a lot of leeway and latitude by trying to attempt to disparage someone for that. If you have those individual grievances with her, you can take them up with her individually. But she is not here because she lost her father.
Okay.
Just last week, and her mother about a month ago.
Okay. Let me continue more together.
Yeah, I'm bothered to speak, so let's just be mindful, sir.
Thank you for letting me know that. Let me continue on with another matter. The mayor. I don't know if he's supposed to be at every meeting. But he's no better. As far as I'm concerned, he isn't even worthy of being a mayor. I've seen him. I know what has happened in the past for years. But let me ask you something. How is it that you can actually have, here's an article. This is concerning a drag queen in the city of Harrisburg, okay? That a drag queen, not this particular one, I'm sure we all know what the R. Showed up at the Scottel Bookstore in Midtown Harrisburg to share a book with children. Few things make my blood boil than that. I have ministered to inner-city children since the mid-1980s. I don't know what you were doing back then, but by the grace of God, I did. They now see me in stores. They're 40 years old and older, and they have children of their own, and they thank me for what I did. Whole manner.
Well, thank you for your comments, sir. But I do believe public comment is supposed to be on agenda items, and I don't think any of this is on the agenda.
Okay, you can bring this to a point.
Okay. So I wish someone would have adjusted to me. I didn't know.
Sir, sir, typically, we give about three minutes or less for public comment. But we've given you a lot of latitudes, so if there's a.
Can you explain to me, is that for now, is that for later?
The public comment has always been three minutes.
Okay. But I mean, is public comment now on any measure, or is this supposed to be something specific? Can you explain to me?
We'd just like to know if there's a point that you are attempting to make as part of public comments closing a lot of other people to make public comments.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment from my right?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt. I live in the 1800 block of State Street. I'd like to first start out by thanking Ms. Bowers for putting the reminder on the website of tonight's meeting. Other issue I have is the work hours for city employees. How long is the city planning, or do they have any idea as to when the employees are going to be going back full-time? My main concern is the Treasury Office. That's only open to the public one day a week. When it is open, only one person is allowed to go in at a time. I don't understand why it can't be open five days a week and one person going in at a time. This is where the revenue is coming in at. People are paying their water bills, they're paying for tickets and for other things. We need that office, if nothing else, open more hours to the public.
Thank you.
Any other public comments to my right?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Laura Harding, 2246 North Third Street. I'd just like to first follow up with the City Island. As you know, I filed a number of right-to-know requests, and I have received hundreds of documents back. And the latest one I filed was to obtain all of the contracts for all of the current operators on City Island, and none of them are operating under a valid contract. All of the signature lines are blank. So I would assume that that means that they probably don't have a lot of incentive to also pay their rent. So have we been generating any revenue as these contracts have been not valid for years now? Like, I need the entirety of Papenfuss's tenure. And so therefore, I'd like to know who's responsible for ensuring that the contracts are valid and signed? Who is responsible for administering and managing the contracts? Because in my world, that's grounds for termination, to not have followed up on that. Is it the Law Bureau, is it the Director of Parks? I believe that this means that there needs to be an immediate contract audit done of all of the city's contracts. And I think that you should hire a third-party person or firm to conduct that audit. Additionally, with respect to the liquor license for the bathhouse, I filed a right-to-know request with the Liquor Control Board for that information because there was no notice published or posted on the bathhouse itself notifying the public that an application had been filed. And it hasn't been, doesn't have to be posted, apparently, if a licensee is filing a request for a second location. And the application that has been submitted is from a Hershey Distillery called Hidden Still Spirits. And they have multiple citations. You can go to the Liquor Board, do a license search, and find and read their citations. But I find most fascinating in these documents that I obtained from my right-to-know request is that one of the people that is Papenfuss's favorite people to attack is Pianca. And it's funny how everything he attacks these people for is something he ends up in turning around to do himself. And in this case, that is true. Because in 1987, Pianca, who was once the operator of the arcade on City Island, filed an application to open a clubhouse, restaurant, tavern on that City Island, and it was denied because the National Park Service has oversight of City Island with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So it was deemed to be a conversion, and he wasn't allowed to do it. Now, it's interesting that Papenfuss's favorite lobbyist is trying to do the same thing that was previously denied back in 1987. With respect to the planning and zoning appointment that's on the agenda for the resolution, I'm going to ask the City Council to deny this and for the following reasons. We need to have equal representation on these boards from all neighborhoods, not just Midtown. And if you approve this request, it'll be a third person who has ties to Midtown on the board, and that's not equal representation. The zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial body. It wields a tremendous amount of power, and people are being disenfranchised, and residents are constantly having these boards voting against their interests in favor of developers. People are being displaced as a result because the neighborhoods are changing and people can't afford to live there anymore. What's even more fascinating is that myself and the President of Camp Curtin Neighborhoods United, Ms. Joyce, having attended these meetings, and we're speaking out in opposition to many of these things, but nobody knows about it because our biggest propaganda magazine in Harrisburg, known as The Berg, conveniently cuts those out. So whenever there are comments opposing these developers, they leave it out of the articles. That's all. Thank you.
Any additional public comments to my right?
Good evening, Council. Pam Harson, 1820 Holly Street. I'll be counselperson Bowers to appoint, this is the 19th meeting, that our mayor has missed. And while I know that there's only so much that you can do, I would encourage you to use the power that you have. I don't suppose you have the mid-year budget review, because I haven't seen anything yet. You know, we are well into the budget process. Next week will be November. I'm also, was quite concerned this week in hearing about his, his plan for the art funds, the American Rescue Plan. Many communities around the country have created governmental and citizen partnerships to work together to decide how to spend that money. And yet, that is not happening here. And again, I and other people were raising this issue before council went on hiatus for the summer, and we're almost to November, and we, we don't have anything. So this past week has really made me feel that this is just good old Harrisburg, that this is the messy way that we do things, that backroom deals get made, people make agreements, and so many others are left out. You, you heard Laura mention earlier about the bathhouse. That is Adam Maust, who also is working on the Hudson/Atlas Building in, at 6th and McClay. Where are the permits for that? Some of us have tried to look at them, and we can't find them. Where is the building permit? This is a person who wrote checks to folks, and they bounced. This is, there were people working in that building without protection, removing asbestos and other things. There are issues of dumping. There is land that the Redevelopment Authority, I'm sorry, the Housing Authority owns that had things dumped on in the middle of a neighborhood. Like, when are you going to call these people into account? And here we are also, November, and where's the police report? Where's the quarterly report? We haven't seen the commissioner since the last time you called him into account. So where is that? And finally, I am also concerned about the potential appointment to the zoning hearing board. There is not only no neighborhood diversity on that board, but with, there is also no racial diversity. Who is responsible? Is it just us as citizens to come forward and say, "I want to be on this"? I mean, does anybody work on trying to fill boards and commissions and trying to do it in a way that is equitable? You got to use your power, folks.
Any additional public comment to the right? Moving into the center.
Good evening. Kamika Campbell. That's better. Okay. Kamika Campbell, 315 South Front Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Okay. So I don't want to harp on the, all the various proposals that are going on in the news, but we are here again. It was another city council meeting, and we don't have any proposals for our annual budget. We don't have proposals for our American Recovery Plan funds. But we do have a vast amount of proposals in the news. And so, again, not, not you all. But I, I want to say that part of what's frustrating about this is there are people in our community who are organizing for the people's budget. We are trying to make sure that we get as many people involved in this process as possible. And what we keep seeing is just a radio silence on actual governing and a whole bunch of noise in other areas. I even got a special mention on the mayor's campaign page this week. So there's a lot going on, but there's no actual governing that we can see, that we can tangibly participate in as residents of the city. And I think what's pretty terrible with that is, you know, the people's budget was even shared on the campaign page, but there has been, and it's kind of this lip service idea. We're paying lip service to the people's budget that the residents are organizing, but we're not actually engaging with residents around the budget needs that they think are important to address. So I just wanted to come again, say that into the, into the public record, that we are still waiting on engagement from our city administration. We've, you know, beat down the doors of council members. Anybody who knows any, any of us who are vocal, we are very vocal, and we also try to put feet to our, 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 our words, not just saying things. So we're just waiting for some engagement from our city administration. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? I think we covered that. I, I will speak to the, just the budget process just quickly because I think that it's a unique time because it is an election year. So what typically would happen, without trying to get into the politics of who wins election, who doesn't, if the incumbent mayor remains the mayor, he will propose the budget as planned, and the council will actually vote on that budget before the end of the year. However, if there's an administration change, council will pass what we call a shell budget to basically keep business open as of January 1st. And then, because of election year, we have a new council and a new mayor that we will reopen the budget. Actually, we, uh, being me. Collective council will reopen the budget in January and then go through budget hearings as if we were doing it in fall. So just to give a sense of timeline, so not many people have commented too much because obviously there's a lot that happens as of Tuesday to make that final determination in terms of where things go from here. So wanted to kind of put that out there just to give a sense of why there could be. So yes, you'll probably hear a lot of proposals being thrown around, but guess what? None of it really matters until the election's been determined, and then we know exactly what the shape of the administration is going to be going into 2022. So I would address that. With no additional courtesy floor, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes from the legislative session of October 12th, 2021? Hearing none, those minutes will stand as approved. Now moving to reports of committees, to a report from Chair Madsen on the work session of October 19th, 2021. Chair Madsen, are you ready with your report?
I am, Vice President Allen. Okay. On Tuesday, October 19th of 2021, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to discuss Bills 11 and Bill 12. Bill 11 of 2021, An Ordnance Appropriating Community Development Block Grant Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2021-2022, and authorizing expenditure of such fund. Bill 12 of 2021, An Ordnance Appropriating Emergency Solution Grant Program Funds for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, and authorizing the expenditure of such funds. The administration provided an overview. Acting Building and Housing Director Denise Hill and Economic Development Auto Banks were representatives of the administration. They provided an overview and update of CDBT/ESC process. Council members then asked questions. The applicants then, that were present, provided an overview of their projects. Applicants were Herwin, CCU, YPOC, Justice House of Hope, Catch, and CEO. The applicants went over a range of projects ranging from support of immigrants locating in Harrisburg, human trafficking, the Juneteenth celebrating, celebration and supporting homeless populations. Overall, the applicants provided a detailed overview of the projects and largely council was in favor. There were a few technical amendments council requested for the admin to review before final passage. Currently, the administration is looking over some clients, some clients pieces. So we won't be voting on it tonight, but at some point, we'll look to review and a final vote in the near future. I don't know, Neil, do you want to?
Yeah, I will just say the administration, through the request of the Law Bureau, is asking to remove them from the agenda tonight, just to have an abundance of caution for audit compliance. The CARES Act money was treated differently than other CDBT funds, and we just want to make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed before council is asked to vote.
And that concludes my report. Thank you. Moving on for ordinance, first reading, we have none. Moving on for ordinance for amendment, Bill 11 and Bill 12 have been moved from the agenda tonight, pending what our city attorney has just stated. Ordinance for final passage, also Bill 11 and Bill 12 have been moved from the agenda for tonight. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution of 77 of 2021. Chairman, will you go ahead and read that into record?
Resolution 77 of 2021 is a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment and vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for, for city operations by the Bureau of Fire.
That has been placed in public safety. Moving on to Resolution 78 of 2021.
Resolution 78 of 2021 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development and subdivision plan to consolidate 21 lots of, and re-subdivide them into nine lots to allow the construction of a mixed-use building featuring a community center, 12 apartments, 12 apartment units, and accessory parking on one parcel and eight separate parcels, each accommodating a single townhouse in the square block bounded by Hamilton Street, Logan Street, Clinton Street, and North Third Street.
That will place, be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution 79 of 2021.
Resolution 79 of 2021 is a resolution appointing Ms. Autumn Anderson to serve on the zoning hearing board of the city of Harrisburg.
And that will place in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to old business, council, does anyone have anything for old business?
Yes, yes. Just wanted to make the public aware that council will be doing a final vote on the comprehensive plan November the 23rd. And if you have not done so yet, please send me any potential amendments you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional old business, council? Moving on to new business. Any new business for this evening?
Yes, I would just like to remind everyone that.
Yes, I would just like to remind everyone that tomorrow night, Harrisburg City Council will be hosting the pre-trick-or-treat night bash. Um, tomorrow, October twenty-seventh, from five to seven PM at fire stations one and eight, which is at eighteen twenty. Um, North Sixth Street is fire station number one and at nine, South Thirteenth Street is fire station number eight. Uh, costumes are encouraged, but they're not required. Come out, have fun. We've, uh, have refreshments. Council members will be there and we'll have candy. So bring your kids and enjoy the night.
And that's actually the evening before we actually have the citywide trick-or-treat, which is on Thursday evening. I know there's, I think one of the news outlets got that wrong. So Thursday evening is trick-or-treat night in the city of Harrisburg. Um, any additional new business council members?
Yes. Um, I think again, uh, this council takes, we take our role in terms of governing in the city of Harrisburg, very, very serious. Um, yeah, many of us grew up here or if not in the, in the region. Um, you know, we have family members here, our, our mothers, our aunts, our uncles, our cousins. Uh, and we are, um, you know, just as outraged as many of you in the public are. Uh, you know, for one, uh, every member on this council has been seeking additional information from the, uh, administration regarding a, a myriad of things, um, particularly the American Rescue Plan. Um, I normally don't like to speak myself, but at every city council meeting for the last nineteen meetings, I've asked, can we get a meeting about the American Rescue Plan short of two? Because at the last few, uh, several of my fellow council members said more than enough with respect to our desire to have a conversation with the administration about American Rescue Plan dollars and what those plans are. We've received nothing. Uh, we hear proposals that are touted in press conferences, but nothing's in writing. Where are the details? How are we going to spend the money? What are the allocation formulas? How is this going to be reconciled with all of the, the interim guidance that's currently in place? You know, these are real questions that we all have. We know that they brought on council to help them with those things, but these are things that they could talk to city council and real residents about. We cannot continue to use plans of the past to try to dictate how we're going to spend those dollars. We have all been asking for that for months. I, for one, asked at every council meeting for probably four months and even during the hiatus, we are asking, hey, can we get a plan? Can we get a meeting? We've got nothing. Um, I, I'm, I am passionate about this because it is something that is a game changer for our community and our community needs to be involved in that process. So far, we've heard nothing. We hear the proposals that the administration may want to do, but we don't know what the, what an administration will look like come January fourth, twenty twenty-two. So I think, um, it is going to be my recommendation to my members of council for us, when we receive a budget, not to allocate a single dollar of American Rescue Plan money until we, because we won't know who, we, at that point, hopefully, well, in November, we will know who the mayor is, but the current, if, we should know and get a real feedback from our community on how they want to have these dollars spent. It is, it is something that is beyond me that the chief executive of a city has not showed up to a city council meeting in six months. I think it was April was the last meeting that he occurred and that was via Zoom. We can't, we can't see you. We can't have a conversation with you in public, attempting to meet with us one-on-one. None of us here are into backroom deals, period. We are one of the most open and transparent councils that the city has seen. We have been fighting to get our city back on equal footing and level footing through a crisis that was not, uh, that was the fault of no one sitting on this council. The city was at five hundred million dollars worth that people did not want to serve on council. The people that put forth the effort and time and dedication to this community to try to work as stewards, because we're only here for a short amount of time, want to see the city move forward. All of us do. Our community does. But to tell me you cannot show up before an equal branch of government for six months is ludicrous. We are less than six day, we're six plus days, six days and maybe twenty-five hours away from, well, no, excuse me, six days and twenty-three hours away from the polls being closed. We have not seen him as a body, as a body. Has anyone seen the mayor? We have not. We are very frustrated, but just know that this budget process that will be coming up, a new mayor will have an opportunity and a new council will have an opportunity to really look to develop and spend money and resources in this community to benefit our residents. I am just beyond that we have not seen him, but you know what? I think the voters will decide on Tuesday who the new mayor of the city will be. And at that point, we will be able to forge a path forward for all of our residents and to continue to have people that will sit on this body, that will advocate for you. Our silence is not that we're not listening. I know for one, my frustration would not let me speak until today. Had I said other things, I may not have been as nice as I am today and I'm trying to be as, as politically correct as I possibly can. And with respect, uh, you know, not going to speak directly to any other public comment that was made, but I will remember, um, you know, that my God told me, you know, and the Bible talks about in Matthew seven one, judge not lest we said to be judged. So let's just be mindful. We are a very inclusive community in, in the city of Harrisburg. We want to see everyone thrive and grow and be, uh, great citizens of this community that we all love and desire to see, um, continue to grow and flourish. And with that, I just want to say, uh, thank you.
Well said, well said. Uh, but that also dovetails to the announcement I was going to make is a reminder that November second is election day. With more than twenty-one thousand registered voters in the city of Harrisburg, can we see them come out and vote? Um, usually municipal election, and we're lucky to see six thousand people vote. That's sad. Um, so keep that in mind. Polls open at seven, they close at eight PM. And local elections matter, everybody. They really, really do. Um, hearing other, uh, new business from my colleagues, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks much. Council is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.